Yeah.
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 Doing better slowly.
We'll figure it out because I'm It's like
Right.
No, no.
A moment.
She's
Prodigy. She's doing better slowly.
Kevin. 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 It's what happens. Calling you happy days. All right, we're ready. We're gonna go ahead and call the city council meeting to order Monday, March 9th at San Antonio. Uh, roll call. Nicole Holley-Aprile.
Tom Marsley.
Michelle Adams.
Lloyd Johnson.
Kirby Monahan.
Lenny Manson.
Ryan Herman.
Jared Bogey.
William Corbin.
All right, and Therese.
Welcome, Nicole. Congratulations. Let's pray. Father God, we thank you so much for your presence here tonight, and we thank you for each one that you've enabled to come tonight to serve and to support our community. Lord, your word says in Romans 13:1 that all authorities have been established by you. Lord, we thank you for establishing this council and this authority in the city of Montrose. Lord, but they need your help for their assignments. Lord, you spoke through the Apostle Paul in speaking to Timothy and all of the church and all of the believers to pray for those in authority. So tonight, Lord, we pray for this council and every other person in this room that is in a place of leadership and authority. We ask, Lord, that you would give them wisdom. We ask that you would give them encouragement. We ask that you would give them strength. We ask that you would give them a spirit of unity. And Lord, we ask that you would lead them and guide them. Father, as a work through the agenda, and Lord, more than anything, we ask that you would align their will and their plan with what your perfect will and your plan is for this city. And Lord, tonight, we want to remember Deb Bolt, our city clerk and treasurer, as she's recovering from surgery. Lord, it sounds like she's having a rough time. And Lord, we ask that you would just visit her tonight with your healing power, that you would relieve her from the pain, and that you would restore her back to complete health and wholeness and bring her back on her feet, literally. Lord, we just bless her and all those here who have so faithfully served our community. We commit this meeting to you tonight, Lord, in Jesus's name. Amen.
United States of America, in a true republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, um, we're going to go ahead and get an approval to the agenda.
I want to I got a couple of changes. For this for Oh. I want to under Planning and Zoning, number item D, number four, I thought it might be, have that be moved back to the Planning and Zoning.
So you're removing it from the agenda?
Do we want to have discussion on it before we do that?
It'd be nice to know why.
Yeah, what's the reason?
Well, because the last one, we were given a different map, and this is probably one that should have been on the first place to show where they're gonna put the panels. And I don't think that anybody on Planning and Zoning, they all thought it was gonna be over the hill, out of vision. But now it looks like on this map, and Ryan can probably tell me better, this is gonna be starting right on top of the hill right, right after the driveway there, right?
So you're, you're talking about taking the, the solar farm lease discussion off of the agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I thought it was coming up. They were, I, we had discussed earlier with staff that I was, my understanding, the council hadn't seen the lease yet. It was just finalized today.
Yeah, but it should also go back to Planning and Zoning what we do here.
I would appreciate it. Yeah, we can send that along to, to Planning and Zoning.
Okay. Anything else, Senator? Do you have approval then to the agenda? I want a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes by zero. Consent agenda? Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes by zero. Uh, we have now opened a forum, so let's go to Wright County.
Hello. Uh, I just want to say, I worked here a few years ago, so I don't know everybody, but I recognize some faces. Uh, I just got back from Montrose beginning of February. So I'm getting back into the swing of things in town, uh, but from my perspective, nothing too pressing is going on in town, which I think is a good thing. Yeah, so if you guys have questions for me or my nice partner Brady here, have at it.
Covering for the day, so I don't have a whole lot of information.
My question would be, how long are you guys gonna be around here? It's just like every meeting, we have somebody new.
I'm covering for basically an open shift for today, so I can't guarantee I'll be there here next time.
I should be here all year. You should be here all year.
Yep.
Okay. And then I have a question to, um, back on March 2nd, we had a situation, I don't know who the officer was, so I have no idea. Enforcing our city ordinances. What is your stand? I mean, when we have a car, an enabled car that is disabled car, I should say, on the streets for multiple days, how does Wright County enforce that?
It depends.
On?
Uh, several factors. If somebody calls us and says, hey, this is what's going on, this is why, we're typically gonna be a little bit more lenient toward them and sympathetic for them. Not that somebody who just dumps it off and they're like, no, I'm not gonna get rid of it. Well, then we take stricter enforcement action. In this case, I wasn't involved. I, I'd have to look at it to see what the reason was.
That specific vehicle, so I had taken that call. Uh, basically what turned out to be was it had been broken down and they had contacted an agency, a donation agency that wanted it. But so they've been there over a couple of days is what it sounded like. But they just hadn't been able to get a company out to take care of it at that point. And as soon as I made contact with them about it, they explained what was going on. So given that aspect of it, I didn't feel any enforcement action was necessary, given the circumstances.
Okay, I understand that, but since you just admitted it was a couple of days and we do have the snow ordinance, and it was a vehicle that didn't even have a tire on it on First Street, why wasn't it addressed two days prior to that, is my question? I mean, because we, we pay Wright County quite a bit to enforce our ordinances and follow the rules of the city, and it wasn't until I reached out to city staff to inform them what was going on that Wright County did something.
And I can't speak for that. I was, again, covering that day, so I was just in town that day and I dealt with it as I knew the situation.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anything else? All right, city council. Is there a name?
Sure. Uh, this month, I had my Montrose Days committee. I went to the leadership training in Baxter, which was amazing, and then that was it. End of city council.
Okay, we have a city council meeting, uh, meeting with the auditors, uh, several personnel committee meetings, planning and zoning, PDA meeting, Wright County Board of Commissioners, uh, Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, and the League of Minnesota Cities webinar regarding social media. Uh, as far as the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon goes, I just wanted to read the events that are coming up this year. In April, they have the annual Atlanta 5K on Saturday, April 25th. In May, there's a picnic for service members of Veterans Park, and we participate in the local Memorial Day celebration. In July, we'll be volunteering in Bingo at Wright County Fair for Montrose VFW post 1901. August, a Montrose Day Parade, table at the fire, car, and pork chop dinner. Volunteer at the state fair, the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon booth on Military Appreciation Day. October, representatives from the group will be attending the fall Joining Community Forces conference at Camp Ripley. In November, they have a care packages for area service members for Thanksgiving, and they serve dinner. And in December, we have a holiday cookie giveaway along with dinner. This, there's a copy of this in City Hall right now. Hopefully it'll get in the newsletter as these things happen up there.
I was looking for Doug, too.
Oh, yeah, so if anybody needs a copy, just hold me on. That's it.
All right. Um, I attended also, I visited with the auditors, Park and Rec, Montrose Days committee meeting, personnel meetings, council meetings.
Planning and, Planning and Zoning and workshop and I, I did miss the council meeting this last month.
City Council, PDA, the League of Minnesota Cities Conference, and Fire Department.
All right. Coming.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, in your packet should be our activity report for, uh, February. If there's any questions, I can address those. Uh, other item on the agenda, um, looking to get authorization to purchase a new tender truck. Um, we've been working on this project for about a year. I approached a workshop a while back regarding this, um, just to kind of put up an informational, uh, meeting with council and staff regarding it. Um, so we decided to go through Midwest Fire, um, who is, uh, who built our previously new tender. And it's through an HDAC contract, so no bidding is required because it's going through a consortium. Um, so the total price of our spec'd out truck at this point is $232,238. It's for a 2,021 Freightliner 2,000 gallon tender. We should take delivery within nine to 12 months after we get the ball rolling. This is going to be replacing our 1997 tender, um, which is also a 2,000 gallon tender, but it's manual transmission, which causes some issues with, uh, operation for some people. Just saying lightly, so. Um, so I guess tonight, um, I can address any questions that you may have. Um, I'd like to thank Jeff from Midwest Fire for working through us with this, and then all the guys in the truck committee who have put a lot of hours expert on two spec sheets over and over and over again, so. Um, tonight I'm looking for authorization to purchase and sign purchase documents, um, on behalf of the city, for a new tender through Midwest Fire over in Minnesota.
Is the funding already set aside or not?
Yes, we have, we have plenty of money in our capital.
I'll make a motion to go ahead with the new tender.
I'll second it. All right, uh, Kirby?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Aye.
I'm Tom.
Yes.
And Nicole?
Aye.
All right, motion passes by zero.
And then just a little side note, um, I've been getting a lot of phone calls regarding coronavirus. Um, you guys would have no idea how many people think that it's important to call this Fire Department regarding questions. I am monitoring the situation. Um, I'm not putting a whole lot of time and effort and energy into it, unfortunately. We have very good working relationships with Wright County Emergency Management, Wright County Public Health, the State Department of Health, the Centers for Disease Control. So that's where I get all the information from, and that's where I push everybody to, but I do monitor it. I get plenty of emails about it, plenty of phone calls, which make me get more emails about it and stuff, so. Um, we are kind of keeping an eye on the situation, but really there's nothing to do other than make sure that you're using proper hygiene and stuff, so.
Well, I would suggest of the guys that don't know how to drive that truck, but I'm borrowing from old beetles from old hermetic down here. I'm not gonna drive a stick.
So getting rid of that truck is actually gonna be our last manual transmission now, too, so. Um, when I got, I think we had three of them. So for the course of the last 15 years, we've got rid of all of those finally. And if PDA doesn't even allow for manual transmissions anymore for safety reasons and stuff, so. It'll be a, a good addition to our department, so.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, Kevin.
Kevin, one thing to add, there's a significant increase in the virus A as well right now.
Yes. Yeah. Lot, lot of loose stuff going on right now, too, so. Which makes the coronavirus a little bit more difficult to monitor, so.
All right, thanks, Kevin. Uh, Park and Rec. So we had a Park and Rec meeting last Thursday. We talked about our capital improvement plan, Parks and Trails plan. Um, we're taking a couple pages out of the Parks and Trails plan and, um, having our commission go through it. And they will bring any concerns that they have at the next meeting, also up to Wayne. Um, we set in motion our Easter egg hunt, which is April 11th, uh, at 10 o'clock here. And then we talked about our 2020 events. Summer Splash is our next event that will be coming up. And then new business, and then we had Mason from the Boy Scouts come and talk to us, so. Um, that's what I have, and now I want Mason to come on up.
Hello? I gotta find this out. Hello? Uh, I'm Mason Spolicle. I'm an Eagle Scout candidate with the Boy Scouts here in town. And I'm, uh, here to talk about Goggle Ball Pit, that I think would be a great addition to the community. It would probably be put right up there, I'm thinking. And, uh, Goggle Ball is, uh, just a game that we play on scouts, and it's an octagonal arena with eight sides. Um, it provides a lot of hours of fun, uh, for us all in Boy Scouts, like, I've spent multiple hours in it, and I think it would be a great addition to the community. Especially for teens, since I've noticed that teens, especially around Montrose Days, don't have many things to do, because we're just kind of sitting around, because there's like the playground for kids, but nothing really for teens to do. I've put in with the, with my little sheets here, uh, the cost, which would be estimated around 778, but I'm requesting for about 850, with the city to also provide Class V, about 22 feet across and about three inches deep below it. Um, I've also put in on page two the rules for a sign that I'm also requesting. That would just be the normal brown signs that you have around your parks. And then if you go to page three, I have two pictures of Goggle Ball Pits as well. Mine will look closer to the second picture, except, um, if you see there's one side that has only two boards, instead I would be putting a gate, since I thought it would be more of a tripping hazard with kids going up and over, and rather just a gate in the locker you can open and close. Um, and then for injuries, you're not looking at anything too serious. It's not, you know, in the air or anything like that, so I think the only thing you might get is some cuts and scrapes. Um, I've requested to make a motion for $850 for this, and then all money that I do not use will then be returned to the city.
Hey, Mason, how long has this been around, Goggle Ball? I feel like I've been in another planet for years.
First time I heard it was last night, so I never heard it either.
Yeah, it's been around in scouts for quite a while, but I've never, like, when I joined scouts, I've never heard of it before, except for scouts, so. I believe it originated in the Jewish world of Israel back in the 50s, I think. Don't quote me on that, but, um...
Probably wasn't called that, right?
Yeah, I think it was, I don't know. Probably some other name. But, um, it mainly were, I've seen the most popularity is just in scout and scout reservations.
One, one point as well, you'll see several school districts around the area that are putting Goggle Ball pits for their middle school and their high school kids, so a lot of them in the community are putting it out. So it's becoming more prevalent within the schools as well as a activity for their free time.
One was just put in at North Winds up in Buffalo. I know that school, but.
So when do you plan on having this completed?
Um, mid-May, I'd say. So then the thaw is all done, and then it's good to actually stake things in the ground. But it would definitely be done before June.
And it's the one pit?
Yeah, one pit.
And this could, is gonna be a temporary? Or, because I know we talked to you about, um, you want to have it here at this park, but Montrose Days potentially be going out to the regional park in 2021?
That, that is mainly up to you guys, and then I will be working with Wayne, uh, depending on where it is, because it'll be made with bra, uh, little brackets, so that you can just easily unscrew and put, put them into three, four pieces. So you guys can easily move them. Which then that dictates where you guys would want the Class V to go to, since I don't know if you originally want it to be, um, Montrose Days to always be out here or out at the other park.
Is this freestanding or staked to the ground somehow?
Just staked to the ground.
Staked to the ground.
Will they be bringing their own balls?
Yeah, that would possibly happen. I think, uh, probably the Boy Scouts could have a couple of balls around Montrose Days if it happens out here, but other than that, it would be a playground ball type of game.
These are like little dodgeball kind of balls, right? What kind of ball?
Yeah, just anything signed, really. It could be, yeah, not too big, not like
I could learn from ball, right?
What was that?
Like a volleyball sized ball?
About that.
Yeah.
Okay.
But usually the little, uh, like you'll see them at Walmart with the little plastic balls. So they're not the hard balls that you'll see in, in soccer, that kind of stuff, so it's a soft ball.
Yeah. Because the game does involve hitting the ball and then hitting opponents to get them out of the game, and that's how you would win. Uh, and shots are supposed to be below the legs or below the knees, so yeah, mainly they're softball, since you hit a ball, it's a different people.
Just one handed, right, and one hand down the wall? Is that how it goes? Or is that how it starts?
One hand is on the wall when it starts, and then you throw the ball in and you say ga, ga on the first two chances, and then it's in play. And then from there, you can freely move around, and then, but you cannot grab the ball, you have to hit the ball.
How big of an area is it?
The diameter would be about 20 feet across, and then for the Class V, you'd probably want like two feet on each side, about that, so.
20 feet in the wing, right?
Yeah.
What are your thoughts, Wayne?
Well, we can do whatever we want to. But for the first down, I'd like to not put Class V down. We talked about using grass the first year. The setting it up, the grass and mat down. Then we'll move it wherever.
Wayne, would it be okay to maybe use sand instead? That way they've got, you know, something inside it that's a little more, or maybe put a round block down and, and, and like coating this Class V?
We could do that, too.
Something so it's not so permanent.
Until it's permanent, then it'll
We've talked about being able to move it as well with the ground spikes, the, the tennis landscaping spikes to spike, spike it in so it doesn't move, but be able to take it up, pull a section down, and they'll hold together, and be able to move it in three big pieces. And maybe be able to move it wherever Montrose Days is, so it's available to be moved. And then when there's a permanent site, then we can certainly work with you and make sure we get it set in.
What are you guys thinking of the permanent site will be done? Would it be here or would it be out there?
I think it's still a little up in the air right now. We're still trying to figure it out, but most likely would probably be down there. Most likely. All right, any other questions for Mason?
Mason, I have one. What is your hard date for?
What's that?
Why does it have to be done by June?
Uh, I've enlisted in the Army National Guard, so I actually ship out on June 8th. So that's why it'll most, it'll definitely be done by June.
Yes, sir.
Who are you so that?
All right, yeah, good for you.
Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve funding, uh, for $850 for the Goggle Ball Pit.
Second.
All right, uh, I and Nicole?
Aye.
Kirby?
Yes.
Tom?
Aye.
And Lloyd?
Aye.
Motion passes by zero.
Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to say thank you to the council for supporting our Eagle Scout candidates. We really appreciate it. Just, uh, no one will hit you on planning, planning board committees.
When, oh, no, Ryan, you gonna do planning, Tony?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So at the last, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the, the commission voted five to zero recommending approval of um, a zoning ordinance amendment and a city code amendment related to administrative fines and abatements. And, uh, what, what this intends to do is provide a stronger ordinance related to, um, code enforcement and code enforcement process, and, uh, and administrative hearing related to, um, advanced code enforcement projects. So the, the zoning ordinance seeks to, um, or the zoning ordinance seeks to create a, um, a specific process related, that relates, um, to sending letters, then set, have an attorney send a letter, and then ultimately, a, uh, a administrative hearing that, uh, that the city would put together. Um, and then the, the, the hearing part is in the city code, so there's kind of two different sections of the code that, uh, that were amended as part of this, so. And they, they, um, they run in parallel and they reference each other. So, and then that's why it's, uh, chapter 10039 of the zoning ordinance, then also chapter 10 of the city code, and chapter 25 of the city code, so. A lot of different pieces to it. But the, um, the, the other big part of this is an administrative hearing for an advanced code enforcement pro, process, and, and that would be, um, if, if someone wanted to appeal a, a citation that they received, they could appeal to a, um, a, a panel here, um, that would then preside over the case. And the, the city would have kind of its own little mini, uh, trial per se at the, at the city level. Rather than taking the, the resident, uh, all the way to, uh, actual court and, and spending, you know, five figures at least on something like that. We would handle that, uh, at the city level, um, and as a way of handling these, a lot cheaper. Um, and then, uh, ultimately, the, after the decision, the, the, some, either of the parties could, um, appeal the decision to the city council, and the city council would have the final say on any, um, a citation or code enforcement ruling. So the, the planning commission, um, uh, looked at this at two different meetings. Um, the, they made, um, a few changes at the first meeting, and those are highlighted in red, um, in your packet, so that, that's what the red, red line is in there. Um, and then the last meeting, they go to five to zero recommending approval of, of all the changes, so. Um, I can answer, uh, questions from the council at this time.
Uh, when will the fines actually start after all of this?
When will the fines actually start after all of this hearing and some stuff?
The fines would be, would be early on. The idea of the fines, you know, we would send them a letter and try to get them to clean up. If they don't do it, we would have the attorney send a letter, and you try to get them to clean up. If they're just simply not doing it, not responding to anything, you know, we would issue them a fine. And, and the theory is, nobody wants to get fined, right? It's money out the window, so they're gonna clean up, in theory, right away after that fine, or when they know that, right before they know that fine's coming. And, and after a series of fines, the, the idea is that you've, you've collected money from those fines, and that goes to pay for your administrative hearing, to try to offset the cost a little bit. So the fines are, you're early on in the process, and the hearing is towards the end of the process. Of course, it's, I, I would say it's, it would be very, very rare for it to actually make it to a hearing at the end, and that's really an advanced process that, it, it's not gonna be every month that we're hearing these.
Is there a list on what the fines are?
Yeah, that is, that's in the, the fee schedule. I believe it's a hundred dollars is the first fine, and then, I think it's just a hundred dollars every time, there's no, there's no one...
Per letter?
Yeah.
That's what we did in January.
I was making sure it was, everybody could hear it.
Any other questions?
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2020-02.
I'll second that.
All right, Tom?
Aye.
Nicole? All right, I'll vote I and Lloyd.
Aye.
Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. Okay, now we need a motion for the 2020-03.
So the first one was the amendment to the zoning ordinance, the second ordinance is an amendment to the city code, because it's dealt with in both areas, both the zoning and the city code.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2020-03.
Okay, Lloyd?
Aye.
Kirby?
Yes.
Nicole? All right, Tom?
Aye.
And I'll vote I, motion passes five zero. EDA?
All right, we have a meeting on February 18th for the Montrose Economic Development Authority. Members were myself and Kirby, Mr. Patrick Baumgart from the bank, Joe Rasmussen from CCC, and Sonia Torpeau from chiropractic business. Mainly, we talked about a lot of things, kicking off this thing. Joe had contacted Minnesota Department of Transportation regarding the situation and traffic flow there, except for, and Highway 12, and quartering about a roundabout or a traffic light or something, they basically left and out of there. So other than the turn lane, that's all we're gonna get there for now. We, we talked about, in fact, we have money in the books to hire a student intern to evaluate and revamp the city of Montrose website. In addition to that, we wanted to do an economic development brochure, and improve the information that's on the website, so when somebody looks at Montrose for potential places to put their business, they can actually see what's going on here, see what land's available, and things of that nature. So the city staff is working on that, trying to get somebody who's in college, who's in web design or something like that, to go ahead and dedicate some time over the summer. And then in conjunction with that, the Montrose Wayfulty Chamber of Commerce is willing to pitch in a little bit to have that done, because that is a tool that they can use to attract business into the Chamber of Commerce. We also had the pleasure of having Mr. Glenn Ortega, who's the outgoing executive director for Wright County Economic Development Partnership. He fills in on their mission statement, and how we can partner with them, and all the things that the Economic Development Partnership can do with the city. So we have another meeting coming up on the 17th of March, and we hope to have, in fact, we will have Shannon Sweeney out there to talk about alternative financing. That's it.
And Dwight will be at chamber meeting, right? Speaking, I believe? I think that's, there's something, yeah, I think so. All right. Jared?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first item on the agenda this evening is relative to a grant opportunity through the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, and it's for a shelter at the regional park. The grant application deadline is March 27th, 2020, and there's a resolution in your packet this evening. Ultimately, some very conceptual preliminary work has been done on the, on the shelter, as noted by the drawings included in your packet. Those are not the final design by any means. There are a couple tweaks that we talked about as staff that need to be made, however, that can be accommodated as part of the final design, should the city be fortunate enough to receive that grant. So the request this evening, should council desire to pursue that grant opportunity, is to adopt the resolution that was included in your packets this evening.
Any questions?
So this would be a grant just for the shelter?
That's correct.
Yeah, we went with this grant.
How about the roads and stuff? Are we gonna, will we need a road by the time we get up to the shelter, or not?
Yeah, so the shelter grant opportunity is available, so that's why we're suggesting or making council aware of it. I do not anticipate that that would be constructed in the immediate future, so we'd have opportunity to plan for access to the park, and things of that nature, too. It is a competitive grant program, but we certainly wanna, wanna pursue it.
Right, yeah, we worked for this grant, what, two years ago?
Twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen, yeah, so...
Yeah, if you don't apply for the grants, you never get them.
Right, yeah, you gotta take advantage of that one again, so...
The only question I had would be, so this would say that if it, the construction, if it were to go through, would start in 2021, and it wouldn't be completed until June of 2022, how would that affect Montrose Days being moved down there in 2021? Wouldn't be able to use it then? There wouldn't be any kind of shelter there?
No, there would be no shelter.
Because I know that was one of the talks that we had about putting a shelter up as quickly as possible, was for 2021 of Montrose Days moving there. And then having electricity, otherwise, then what?
Move it to 2022.
So then you, what, cancel Montrose Days?
We didn't have Montrose Days up there before, right?
Well, right, but in 2021, all of this area is being, you know, reconstructed, and unless they get all of this done really quickly over here, they have to move it up there, and then they don't have electricity if there's not a shelter, unless there's a way to put electricity out there.
There is electricity, there is a transformer out there. All you need is a temporary service.
Right, that and Montrose Days, still discuss that. And then last night, too, as well, at the Montrose Days meeting, we, they discussed that they will be meeting with city staff, suit future plans for 2021, and I actually suggested getting together with city staff, city council, Montrose Days Committee, Park and Racing, just all of the organizations, so that they're aware as to what's gonna be happening in 2021, and the future from there. Because we will not have a shelter for 2021. We did, just since we're gonna have, we don't have the money to put it out there. The grants, even if we do get the grant, the building will not be built. So I think it's best that all organizations just get together and get this plan figured out, because it's not, it's really not that far away.
Yeah, we just don't have a half a million dollars on the shelter out there, right now?
I will then make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-29, to get the approval to attempt to get this grant.
I'll second that.
And I'll vote I, Tom?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Nicole? All right, and Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, Mayor and Council, the second item in your packets this evening is relative to the 2021 street improvement project. We discussed this a couple meetings ago, as it related to the assessment policy. Ultimately, at that meeting, there is generally consensus, although no vote was necessarily taken, generally consensus to leave the options open for, for assessments associated with the improvement. There are very specific statute requirements associated with that, the first of which is that council adopt a resolution authorizing the preparation of a report. Ultimately, what that report is gonna do is it's gonna define the project area, it's gonna define the cost, it's going to identify the assessments associated with the project. Ultimately, council decide whether or not the improvements are assessed. But to leave that option open, this is definitely the first step in that process. So once the report is prepared, that also, during that process, rather, it also allows us to meet with a Wright County engineer, or his assistant, and discuss the county funding policy, because we fully expect that there will be participation associated with that. So really, it's really the first step in identifying some details associated with what streets get improved, and how, and what the total cost of that is. So with that, I'll pause for any questions, but there is a resolution authorizing the preparation of a report.
Would we have to have a public hearing about the assessments?
Absolutely.
But this, this is just to put the report together to say how much everybody would have to pay in general, right? The county, the city properties?
Yes, the report will identify the overall project costs, and then it'll break it down based on what the potential funding sources are associated with it.
It's basically what started, it's what's necessary to get the project started, isn't it?
Yeah, I don't think we can kick the can on these failing roads too much. Make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2020-10.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? Do you have something?
Well, I was gonna say, do we have to put it up for bids, or is the county gonna take care of that, or?
We will put it up for bids. That's, that's a ways down the road yet, that's, this report will get all that.
Twenty twenty, about third done?
Yeah, I mean, this is what you have to do to start that, so he can actually start it. All right, we'll go ahead, I'll vote I and Lloyd.
Aye.
Kirby?
Yes.
Tom?
Aye.
Nicole? All right, motion passes five zero. All right, personnel committee, we had a couple different meetings, and basically what it was, was going over, we have, so a couple reviews come on up, that just came up with Deb and Wayne's, and then we went over a discussion on peer reviews. And at that meeting, we talked about continuing on with the peer reviews, which is basically having all the peers collectively give input, so that the personnel committee, myself and Tom, can give the reviews.
Anonymous.
Yeah, everything is anonymous, it's just handed to them, and they're given an envelope to return everything back to City Hall, and nobody knows who it's coming from, or what's going on. So also at that personnel committee, we talked about, we had a review on Heidi, and the personnel committee is recommending that we continue to keep Heidi at Monday through Thursday, nine to four thirty, and then Fridays from seven AM to eleven, and a pay increase up to seventeen forty-one. Anything else you want to add?
Cover card.
All right, so we do need a motion, or any discussion, on what, what's going on, and then the approval to, for Heidi's pay increase.
I got a question. So is she going to be in the union? I mean, the question has come to me is, because when she talked about going to the union, she was going full-time, and their contract states full-time, so the question has come to me as to, what about the union?
Union regards thirty-two hours, full-time.
Thirty-two hours, full-time. So they, okay, so even the other contract states their hours?
Yeah, hers is on the...
Okay, because that was, that was asked of me. And I guess the question I have, is this effective in April 1st, when their contract is effective then, or how is?
Yeah, it'll go in the same way as the rest of the guys.
Okay, so then?
Yeah, the same way, so they're in a double pivot.
Right, so then, yes, after we talked to Heidi last week, she will be joining the union, and then we also talked to Chris from, filled him in that the hours will be, like I mentioned, nine to four thirty, and seven to eleven, so...
Well, I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve Heidi's increase to seventeen forty-one at the hours listed, nine to four thirty, Monday through Thursday, and seven to eleven on Friday.
Second.
All right, and Nicole? All right. Tom?
Aye.
I'll vote I and Lloyd.
No, because I don't know all the details.
Yes.
All right, motion passes four to one.
Yeah, Council, last month, we had talked about putting on vacation for the summer help, and it's all ready to go, but I'd like to up the wage from twelve dollars an hour to thirteen. Actually, we had a hard time getting anybody. I'd like to get some young people this year.
Is that part-time wage or full-time? Part-time.
This summer help is like three months.
It usually goes from like mid-May, right when the kids get out of college, till, I believe the weekend of Montrose Days, right around there.
Towards the end of Montrose, yes.
I think their union contract states they can't work more than a hundred days. So that's standard, a hundred days.
Seasonal, right?
Yeah, seasonal, please. Just FYI, Hanover, St. Michael, I believe, some, quite a few of them have already come out with their ads, and they are all like thirteen and fourteen dollars an hour, so we are a little bit low compared to a lot of the neighboring cities.
Yeah, but they get to work in Montrose.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to increase the summer tops wages to thirteen an hour. I'll second that. I will vote I and Kirby?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Aye.
And Nicole?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
And also, we have the sidewalk policy on, again, there's a couple councilmen who have questions.
Yeah, so where is it specifically in here? I was trying to read through it, that says how long people have to remove the snow off their sidewalk after a snowfall. I just, I didn't see it through here, I know that everybody's told it's twenty-four hours. But would it be an issue if we were to increase that amount of time to, say, even two days? And my thought behind that is that, say it were snowed, well, we were at that League of Minnesota Cities Conference, and I don't have a sidewalk, but if I did, and if it would have snowed before I left on Friday, or as I was leaving, I would have then gotten a fine by the time I got home, based on what the rules say. And we had people that, I'd gotten numerous complaints, that were saying that within thirty-six hours of the previous snowfall, which should happen on Monday, and they were getting letters to say, "You're going to be charged a hundred dollars if you don't clean this up." Like I said, this was within thirty-six hours of the previous snowfall. You know, if you're gone for even one night, then all of a sudden, you're past the twenty-four hour mark. I get that we want it so that it's safer for kids to get to the buses, and they can, don't have to walk in the middle of the streets, but how, I mean, planning, or the public works guys go out and deliver these letters, right, put them on the doors, and if we're doing that less than two days after a snowfall, isn't there other things that they could possibly be doing if a snowfall just happened? And, you know, I think we'll get a lot less complaints when it comes to the snow removal, if we even give people two days to remove it.
So we don't send out those letters to, we're all done moving cars off all the sidewalks, trails?
So this was just in regards to the last snow that we had, that it snowed on Monday, and I remember that, because then they came on plow, and they were plowing it. And I remember that because then they came out in plow and they were plowing at nine o'clock at night. And then people on Wednesday, early afternoon, were posting their letters already of how they had gotten their notice saying, clear it off or you're getting fined a hundred dollars. So from the amount of time we wanted it to stop snowing by nine o'clock at night and they had gotten it, it was thirty-six hours. So that's, I get that it says twenty-four hours and everybody's told that when they call and ask about it. But I was just curious if there's any way we could possibly increase that. Because like I said, if you're gone one day, all of a sudden now you're getting a hundred dollar fine.
Kirby, I think in reality, if you drive through town, you see there are some habitual offenders. And I don't care if you made it three days to remove their snow, it would still be there. So I'm not sure, you know, adding time to that is going to really help the situation. Just my opinion.
I understand there's people that they're just gonna not do it anyway and we're gonna have to do it and find them. But you know, they just, I think for just the common person who has a lot going on, whether they're single parents or they work nights and wife works during the day, just, you know, anything could help.
Then spend fifteen dollars and hire a neighbor kid to shovel your sidewalk.
We get, I think, just as many complaints as not having sidewalks there within that twenty-four hours because we do have a lot of kids, you know, at the bus stops, the people that are running, just generally walking. To give them an extra amount of time and having kids or, you know, anybody having to go on the street because we've extended the clearing of sidewalks is a big safety concern for me and I and Tom. I mean, it's a responsibility. Twenty-four hours is quite a bit of time. And if it falls on a weekend, say Friday night, you're not, you're gonna have Friday night, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. Anyways, because City Hall is not gonna be here.
I understand. I get it. I just didn't know there's a way that, there are some people that just with the hours that they work and the things that they do, that sometimes they can't get to it in that day, day and a half. And then all of a sudden they're getting a bill for who knows how much, two hundred dollars all of a sudden. And they go, wow, how am I gonna pay for this now? That's why I brought it up. I mean, if we don't change it, that's fine, but it was something that was brought to me and thought I could try to help out.
If I go too long in the snow, get a compact in from walking on it, it'll be clear eyes, so it'll be a lot harder to clear the sidewalk.
I understand. I'm not asking for, to give them, you know, a week to clear it off, but you know, just even an extra day. Like I said, it was, the snow fell on Monday, it was done at nine o'clock and they had letters by one o'clock on Wednesday. So that's when they started posting them all online. People started getting complaints about it, that I was getting calls, messages.
Well, what were they suggesting when I called and complained? How much time were they asking for to shovel the sidewalks?
Nobody asked for any amount of time. They asked how much time they're required to do it. And that the one specific one that I got, very detailed one, was this person. They had a newborn at home and the other person in the family had been working all the hours. And they just didn't get their snow cleared by Wednesday at one o'clock when the letters came out. And they asked why it was so quick. And I said, well, the policy says twenty-four hours. And then listened to them complain about it, which that's, signed up for me on City Councils, listen to these complaints and their, you know, issues that they have going on.
I understand that.
And I just thought maybe we could give them a little extra time just for somebody who's possibly struggling.
I can honestly tell you, we get just as many complaints about not clearing sidewalks as we do about getting the twenty-four hour notice. So it's a toss-up. So if it's snowing on the Monday, they got the letter at one o'clock on Wednesday, that's roughly two days, and then they get the notice at one o'clock on Wednesday. They have another twenty-four hours to still get it completed. So that's like three, what, three days?
Yeah, it starts snowing at seven o'clock on Monday night. So theoretically, Wednesday night would have been forty-eight hours.
Right, plus another twenty-four on top of when the notice comes.
I understand that, but you get people that they panic, they worry, they get heated and upset. I mean, I'm sure you've gotten the phone calls too with the vulgarities of people just frustrated with what's going on. And they just won't drop the subject no matter how much you try to calm them down. Just say, hey, take ten minutes to clear the sidewalk. I get it, I understand, you're frustrated. I mean, I go out at one in the morning sometimes and shovel. And I'm sure the neighbors really love it when I'm out there clanking the metal shovel around at one in the morning. But, you know.
But you walk shovel, right?
Yeah, I do it, but I'm up at those hours and I make the time to do that. Some people, they just struggle with it, whatever they have going on in their life.
Well, like I said, I don't, I think if people are in that situation where they're not sure they can get their walk shovel, they could pay a neighbor good and say, look, if you see my sidewalk still has snow on it, would you please shovel it? I'll give you twenty bucks or whatever. That's a lot less than the fine for the city coming and shoveling your sidewalk. You know, I don't think we need to, I don't think we need to provide all these excuses and answers to people who have a difficult time shoveling their sidewalk. I think we're all in a situation where we were working or traveling or had kids to raise and all that stuff, but we got our sidewalk shoved. So, you know, I'm not sure, I'm not sure extending the past twenty-four hours is the right thing to do.
Can you say that's an extra? I have never seen one of these letters, but it's an extra twenty-four hours after you get the letter? It's a half moved, right? Yeah. All right.
I get it, I get it, Kirby, I understand.
I understand those points of it, you know, and I went through, I made a pro and con list. I thought about both sides of the argument. I get it. I just, it's something I thought I'd bring up, just, you know, one less frustration that someone in town will have. If they get to it on Wednesday afternoon and they don't get that letter.
Well, I think, I think putting kids in danger, you know, getting to the bus stops by walking down the street, is probably a bigger issue than the fines somebody may get for not shoveling or walking.
Thanks for the discussion. All right, all business, mayor appointments. Any discussion on these?
So unless the finance committee can meet in the afternoon on that Thursday, I'm not going to be able to do it. My hours at work are changing and I'm not going to be dreaming. So I mean, I get that it's, you know, you say that it's flexible to do it, but if it's not necessarily as flexible to say we're doing it in the afternoon, then Tom will have to continue doing it with Nicole.
Actually, it says it's on the Thursday, the quarterly, the fourth Thursday. If you guys, if you two need to change it to fit your schedules, whatever day you're off or whatever day works for Kirby, all we gotta do is change this.
Well, I don't know what her hours are, if she works in the evening.
I work weekends right now. I work weekends now.
And I can't do the mornings like that, so.
And I can do mornings right now.
So I guess.
Afternoon. Isn't that what you just said? Could be searched in the afternoon?
Yeah, like after two o'clock.
And you're at work by then? I'd have to be before two o'clock.
And is there any other day besides Thursday that works with you or not?
My schedule will be the same where it's consistently I'll be getting done early in the morning and would like to try to be functional by the afternoon.
Yeah, you know, and I can, I can work around things too. So if it doesn't, you know, if we get something that worked with the both of us, I can figure it out.
Did we have a liaison officer?
I was gonna say, if it doesn't work for Kirby, then it could be Tom and Nicole.
For the finance?
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I know, but you said that you can't be there and Tom was gonna be.
Well, yeah, Tom and I were doing it before and then Tom had said that he would give his spot after Nicole. And then my hours are changing after this month, so I won't be able to do it.
Sure, I'll go and jump back into my phone.
So just between Tom and Nicole.
Any other discussion? All right, is there a motion then to approve these?
Was, I wanted to wait to ask Lloyd if what Lloyd's thoughts were on you two swapping planning, zoning, park and rec.
I don't think it'd be a good thing because Michelle has a lot of activities. Wouldn't be for her, half the stuff wouldn't get done, the kids would be sacrificing.
I understand that. I brought it up, switching it just for the fact of the. I just brought it up for the issue of conflict of interest and because we've gone over this issue before in the past in regards to planning, zoning, so, so I thought I'd bring it up now.
I did discuss this, well, actually it was brought to me by a couple of staff members too, that they did not want to have it switched just because as Lloyd said, I pretty much do the separate of all of their activities, but it's up to the council what they want to have.
Then it'll be okay for you to be planning and zoning, Lloyd's on?
Just asking.
They don't know their, their schedules.
I know my schedule.
Oh, I know.
It's just I'm working overnights now, starting in April, so.
So just leave it as is.
And that was one of the recommendations from staff too, just to kind of keep things the way they were. Do you have any discussion? Is there a motion?
Okay, so hang on just a second then. Finance committee alternate. So Tom is gonna go back to being the finance committee. Do we need to change the alternate then?
Well, Tom was the alternate.
What's that?
We need an alternate for finance.
I know, I know.
Well, yeah.
Well, no, 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 no. Tom and Nicole are the finance committee. One of them can fill in. Okay. All right.
The other thing I wanted to ask about too was that when we do our workshops, if that's possible to do it at four o'clock. If not, it's fine, I'll make it work, but my kid gets off the bus at three forty-five. So hoping to not have him get off the bus and there's nobody home when a nine-year-old gets home.
Better walk on, walk on the street because the sidewalks have been shoved.
We don't have sidewalks, so every day when we walk to the bus. Every day we walk to the bus at six forty-five in the morning down our road, there's no sidewalks. Mike doesn't hear this when he leaves.
Okay, we did discuss at the workshops that I'm hoping we're changing it to four o'clock. But if it turns into a special council meeting, then it gets.
Pushed to six.
To seven o'clock.
Seven?
Like a normal council meeting.
Why no, we pushed the last one to six.
That's because we had.
The interviews.
Yes. Yeah, but if there's decisions to be made, then it goes to a seven o'clock special council meeting. You guys okay with that?
Yeah.
Nicole, your work schedule okay? Yeah. Okay. All right, then we need a motion to approve all of these.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve Resolution 2020-11, the mayoral appointments.
I'll second that.
Okay, and Nicole? Aye. Tom?
Aye.
I'll vote aye and Lloyd?
Aye.
Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passes by zero. League of Minnesota Cities Investment Fund.
Okay, so the 4M Fund is an investment fund that cities use. It is overseen by the league or is part of the league. So in the past, we've always listed like on our appointment things, we've listed Klein Bank or Old National, whatever it is now, Wells Fargo, we have not used them in years. But the 4M Fund, so basically all of our money right now is at Citizen State Bank and we have it in money markets and we have it in CDers, they're called, so they're CDs, but they're special CDs. We can use some of that money and invest it with the 4M Fund. Depending on how long you invest it with the 4M Fund, the interest is actually really good right now with them or was really good with them, I don't know about anymore. So we're just looking for authorization to be able to do that throughout the year as if we want to, when the CDers or the CDs come up for renewal, if we want, if the 4M Fund has better interest, we can invest it with them instead of it to seek with the CDs. And then we can also like some of the money that's in our money market, we can put with them. They have a number of different levels. They have somewhere you can put it in and take it out a day later. They have something, do it in a month, you can do it six months, you can do it for a year, you can do it for a number of years. So they're really flexible and they have a number of different investment things. And like I said, it's all affiliated with the League of Minnesota Cities, so.
I would assume the interest rates vary with how long you keep it in there?
Yes, it does.
Okay, any other discussion on that?
No. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-12, investing with the 4M Fund.
Second.
Lloyd?
Aye.
I'll vote aye and Kirby?
Yes.
Tom?
Aye.
And Nicole? All right, motion passes by zero. Upcoming meetings is planning and zoning is this Wednesday at seven o'clock. EDA, as Tom mentioned, is, hey, that's St. Patrick's Day.
Yes.
You gonna wear your green?
Yeah, I'm Irish.
Gonna have beard. Next city council workshop is the twenty-third and Park and Rec will meet again on April second. Planning and zoning then, April eighth. City council is April thirteenth, EDA again, April twenty-first, and council, twenty-seventh of April. Do we have any announcements?
I have just one other thing too, to see all the, Deb and I were scheduled to go to the Minnesota Clerks and Finance Officers Conference next week. But Deb will, is not gonna go, so Jessica's gonna go in her place. So it'll be a really good experience for Jessica. So her and I will be gone. We'll leave Monday sometime after lunch and we'll be back Thursday sometime after lunch.
Where are we with the coupons?
It's in St. Cloud.
Oh, okay.
I just want to acknowledge all the staff in the office for picking up the extra work that they're doing with Deb out on recovery, so. Everything's great when I go up there, so why the machine?
All right, motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned at five o'clock.